I thank God for the opportunity that we have to do this kind of forum. And the reason why, they've asked me this for the television interview and all this, is because I really do believe, guys, and this is not an overexaggeration, that our nation, our nation is in a very sick place right now, a very hurting place, broken, confused. And I think part of the problem is, we don't know what's true and what's not true. And whenever a lie gets mixed in with truth, it causes problems. If something bad in your food and you eat it, it makes you sick. And what happens, our nation's sick because of bad information, bad advice, and these situations is happening throughout this nation. I think it behooves us, as people, men and women of God especially, that we stand up and we take our rightful place, that we become the leaders. I, maybe, maybe this is not being said, maybe this is subliminal to me, but I often hear, when I see people marching in Ferguson, in Los Angeles, in New York, one of the cries that I feel like I hear is, "Where's the church? Where's the church?" Our generation, being 59 years old, we had the Civil Rights Movement, which was our, our grand moment. And I think this generation right now, these young people, the millennials, are looking at what's going on around this nation with the police shootings and different things, and say, "This is our defining moment, where we will stand up and make a noise. We will help this nation move from a place of sickness to a place of health." And it's never easy, because whether we know it or not, if we're honest with ourselves, as much as we honor Dr. Martin Luther King, do you know how much he was reviled and hated right before his death? A number of African-American organizations and groups didn't like him because he wasn't radical enough. They wanted him to be more like Malcolm X. There were other groups that didn't like him just because he was messing up the status quo in the communities. And so even though, right now, he is wildly popular, at that moment, at that situation, right then, at the heart of the problem, he was not loved. And a lot of young people right now are doing things that we don't condone, and we shouldn't condone. But God is right now, I believe, is raising up a voice within this young generation in coming, a voice that can stand up and say, "Let there be peace." Sometimes it takes crazy situations to bring out the best in us. And I think if we stand still and wait on God, allow God to speak to us, and not be afraid, not be afraid, but get the information that we need, we can watch God turn this whole thing around. Because sometimes, things don't get better till they get worse. Let's just be honest, we don't go to the doctor until we get sick enough to go to the doctor. We should've went early on, but we don't. Somebody say, "Amen." And so here we are at this juncture, at this time, based on the fact that several young people in our church come and say, "Pastor, we got some problems that we need to address." Because we don't know how or what to expect from the police. We feel like they're harassing us. We don't want Ferguson to happen in Columbus, and I've got news for you, if we're not careful, Ferguson could happen in Columbus. And that's not putting any onus on the police, or saying anything negative about the youth for this nation, because all it is, sometimes, is just an accident, a situation that escalates and gets out of hand on both parts. So what we've done today, we've invited people from the law enforcement society or the law enforcement community to come and to speak to us, and also from the legal community to come and speak to us. And the reason why, as I thought about it, I talked to my stepson over last week, and I was talking to him, I was saying that there are codes, whether you know it or not, in every community, in every group, in every socioeconomic status, there's codes. What do you mean codes? I'll give you an example. If you're walking down through the streets of Columbus, or somewhere that you don't know anybody, it's kind of dark at night, and somebody's walking towards you, they kind of rough, tough-looking, pants sagging, you know, they just kind of just chilling, and you're walking toward them, you don't walk in and just look at them, you go, "Yo, what's up, man?", and you speak to them. That code says, "I'm not here to beef with you, I'm not here to mess with you, I'm just passing through." And that person understands, because that's the code of the community. A lot of people have codes in their jobs. They know, "If I get there and I'm a little bit late, or something's going on, people look at me like, 'Okay, you better start getting here on time.'" There's that unspoken communication that goes on between people, certain groups. And we need to know, first of all, what the code of the police department is, when they roll up on some group of young people, and they see that they're just chilling, or whatever they're doing, what is their mindset, what is the code, what are they thinking when they get there? What is the thoughts of the young people standing around in the corner, and all of a sudden, a cruiser pulls up, and the guy looks out the window at him and says, "Yo, let's keep it moving." What are they thinking? Are they thinking they're being harassed, are they being pushed, what's going on? We need to understand what each person, what each group is thinking, understand the code, the language. Because when a police officer rolls up on about 10 or 12 people, what's his thought process? I know he wants to go home to his wife and children that night, but what is his thought process as he rolls up? Is this group gonna be angry? Is it gonna be volatile? Is it gonna be tough? We're not talking about black or white, we're talking about in general, people in general, because bullets know no color. They hit who they're intended to hit. Or if they miss, they could hit anybody. But what I'm saying is this, is we want to use this moment in time as a moment where we can educate ourselves as parents, as future parents, as young parents, as children, to say, "What can I do in this day and age to stay safe? So that same thing doesn't happen to me that happened to, happened in New York, or happened in Ferguson." Because if we're honest, we're all just that close, if something happens. Depending on who we hang out with, what time of day it is. The Bible says tomorrow's not promised, we know that. Amen? Amen. So that's why we've collected, or assembled, I believe, a good group, a good group of men and women, who I want this morning to be able to speak to us. And what we've done is, we've asked people to give us questions. We've asked people to give us questions, and then we've given it also, I put some questions up here along with the waters. And what we're going to address, things like, for example, one of the first questions is, what is the job of a prosecuting attorney? Whether we like it or not, know it or not, we're all gonna probably at some point face court time, or be in court for a family member or a loved one. We don't know what a prosecuting attorney is, we only see Law &amp; Order. Come on, let's just be real. We watch C.I. and we watch those guys, or my generation was Perry Mason, never lost, amen? But we don't know what they do, or defense attorney, what's a plea bargain? We hear things about that. And so these are just some things I think we need to address, but that's just a light issue. But what do we do, for example, when we're pulled over? What should, what should be our thought? First of all, we know what we're thinking, is, "I didn't do it," amen? Do you guys ever pull anybody over, and they say, "I did it"? "Oh, really, you did? Wow, that must've made your day." Y'all gonna get sick. But most people, they say, "Oh, I didn't do it, I didn't do it." But what can we do to make sure that when that officer steps up to our automobile, or our car, or van, or whatever, that he doesn't have to come up there wondering, "Am I gonna get shot?" One personal experience, and I will admit this, I had my wife and my grandson, and my son in the car, and we were gonna go get my daughter Erin, and we made a wrong turn, and I said, "Oh, man, I don't wanna go all the way back on this freeway." So before I got to the freeway, I just did a quick U-turn. Confess, confess, you're false one to a doubt. And when I did, all of a sudden, woo, 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 lights came on, I mean, every bright light, and they surrounded the car, because there was four of us in there. And she came up, she said, "License registration." She comes back to the car, she comes back, says, "Mr. Williams, can you please step out of the car and step back there with me?" So I stepped back, her with it, I mean, they literally had me surrounded, and I'm thinking, "Oh, Jesus, why is somebody I know drive by and see me standing out there?" Yeah, the pastor's being surrounded. But you know what? I realized, I was wrong. And the best thing to do was just take the punishment. And that's what I did. And I was very cordial and polite, she was very nice, the other guy took his hand off the gun, the other guys got in the car, and they left, and everything went fine. But what had I not done then? What if I'd just decided, "I'm gonna get nasty, you know, leave me alone, things could've escalated." So without any further ado, I'm gonna ask, we have four chairs, we can get five up here, but we've got five chairs. So we're gonna ask, if you guys wouldn't mind, whoever wants to come up, all five of you, we have enough chairs for everybody, you would come on up here, please? What we're gonna get up there? Now, going up there, we're gonna have you, then you'll be able to introduce yourselves, and then I'll kind of act as a moderator, and kind of help us get started, amen? Let's give them a round of applause this morning, can't we? And the one reason why is because, I don't remember your name again, it's Officer or Sergeant Bridges. This is Sergeant Bridges' day off. No, I'm not just saying that to get him applause, but I'm saying, I want you to understand that people will make sacrifices for people who care. He saw an opportunity to reach people, he saw people that cared, and he said, "You know what, I'll take my day off." And they even tried to encourage him to, "Why don't you just take it as a work day, and then you can come back and get another day off?" "No, I just wanna come." And so for that, I appreciate that. So if you don't mind, we'll start at this end, since I already bragged about you, we'll start right down here at this end, because this man is near and dear to our heart down here. Just pull that out of there, and you know, we've got another cordless mic, you can pass them around. I'm trying to call you pastor, is that profanity? We're gonna start this end, and actually, this man is near and dear to our heart, because he works right here in our community. This is where he lives and moves, and has his being right in here. And so we're gonna start here, and we'll just work our way down, just introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name, my name is Lieutenant Dave Davidson, and like you said, I'm the, one of the supervisors here that work in this area. This is, the northern part of Columbus is Zone 1, and I am the Zone 1 Lieutenant. You've got officers that work the cars, and that they're the ones that come to you, and then they have a boss, which is a sergeant, and that's Sergeant Bridges there on the end. And then the sergeant just reports to a lieutenant who works in the zone. And I cover an area that goes probably about from Dublin across the northern part of Columbus over to Easton. So it's a pretty large area, but there are a lot of officers out there working and doing the job every day.
Hi, my name is Bob Stewart, I'm Assistant Safety Director for the C. I retired just under 39 years of service from the police department. I, my last 15 years were spent as a training instructor, the Journal of Starcraft Academy, where I met a young recruit named Bridges. He had his moments.
He jokes about some of them.
He probably wouldn't want me to, but, no, he, he made it scary to me, sit next to him. And I retired a little over three years ago, and about a month and a half after I retired, I offered and accepted a position with the Safety Director's Office. We, we are in charge of police, fire, and a unit called Support Services. They handle weights and measures, and things of that nature. Whenever you go to the service station, and you pay for a gallon of gas, they're responsible, make sure you get a gallon of gas. When you go to market, and ask, pay for a pound of whatever, they make sure the scales and all that type of services is correct. So that's what I do.
My name is Eric Seabrook. I think, as Pastor alluded to, I'm a believer. And I also have been involved in government and politics pretty much all of my adult and professional life, either lobbying the state legislature on behalf of the, what is now the Department of Jobs and Family Services, it was Human Services way back then, in the early 80s. And in spite of my baby face, I've been around for a little while. And also worked as Chief Legal Counsel for the Secretary of State for a number of years. I come at these issues looking at them more from a policy and political perspective. And also, I guess, as these issues pertain, I am a six-foot-three African-American male from down south, and I'm just old enough to understand the transition in thinking of, and know the difference between law enforcement and peace officers. And I think that's an important thing to understand, because we can face both in our lives. And once again, my name is Eric Seabrook.
Good morning, my name is Lisa Thompson, I'm an attorney. I've been practicing for 17 years, I'm currently a partner in a law firm here in Columbus, Haynes Thompson Stewart. I was a prosecutor for both the city and with the county prosecutor's office, and I was a prosecutor from 2003 to 2008, at which time I left to start my own practice. So I, the grand jury process, I presented cases to the grand jury, and prosecuted cases that came through the grand jury, and so I have that perspective of both sides. So it's my pleasure today to be here before you, thank you.
Again, my name is Sergeant Isaac Bridges. I'm currently the sergeant in our burglary section, which I investigate, I supervise a group of detectives that investigate thefts, burglaries, vandalism, stuff from the elderly, you name it, any kind of theft we do. I've been with the division for 17 years. Before coming to the division, I had previous years, I've worked at a couple of different police agencies. I was the first with my 24th year, beginning of my 24th year. I grew up in the northern area, I care about this community, I worked here most of, most of my career before becoming a detective, I worked on the north end of Columbus. The reason why I have broad shoulders and bigger arms, because Director Stewart made me do a lot of push-ups in this class.
Push-ups were done as a result of function.
That's what we figured. You always have one in every class, don't you? Basically, I'm the star. Our forum this morning is going to take this kind of approach, for probably the next 45 to 50 minutes, or whatever, we're going to be discussing some various topics. As I said earlier, we don't want to make this a gripe session, but we want to make this an information session. If you have questions, comments, suggestions, we appreciate that. But again, we understand that we're not gonna solve all the world's ills this morning, but an educated people are people that know how to handle themselves, and what to do in certain situations. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna start off basically by talking about the questions that's on this sheet of paper, don't worry, everybody doesn't have one, they, just myself and I have one. We're gonna talk about some of these things, and then, as you raise your hand, I'm gonna grab my brother, Elder Tim, and I'm gonna have him, if you have a question, raise your hand, and we'll find a way to get a microphone to you, or there's not a lot of us in here, so you can just start yelling and screaming, and say it out loud, amen? I wish you I didn't really mean that, she's like, "Oh, Pastor." Don't scream, just yell, okay? So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna start, probably go left to right, and I'll throw it out there, and this one is for the prosecuting attorney's sister, Lisa Thompson, okay? Guys, I'm old and I forget, amen? So anyway, the first question goes like this, what is the job of a prosecuting attorney?
And so would you like for me to answer that? A prosecuting attorney, we all watch Law &amp; Order, some of us are teenagers, but basically, the prosecuting attorney is an attorney, so they've gone to law school, they've graduated, they've passed the bar, and they choose to work for the prosecutor's office, which just means that it is their job to take a case for it against a person who's been accused of a crime. So you have prosecutors at the city level who prosecute misdemeanors, which are the lower-level offenses, and the most you can get usually for misdemeanors, up to six months in jail. You have prosecutors for the county who prosecute kind of the felony offenses, those are the more serious, anything from possession of cocaine, all the way up to murder, and that's, you know, you can get anything from a minimum of six months, all the way up to life, depending on what it is that you're charged with. And then you also have federal prosecutors who prosecute crimes that are federal offenses. And so it just depends on, you know, kind of where you are, but the prosecutor basically is just an attorney who's hired by that governmental agency to take a case for it against a person who's accused of a, of an offense.
Excellent, excellent. What is the job of a defense attorney? Can you pick up one over here?
I can, even though, you know, that's one of the reasons why I think Lisa's an excellent defense attorney, because she was a prosecutor. But essentially, our legal system is set up on the premise that, first of all, we have a constitutional right to defense, and particularly in cases where our liberty, that means you, it can be compromised, that means when you can potentially go to jail and do some time, that's when that right is particularly emphasized. And you will always hear, and I guess I'm not getting into definition, so I'll go back to definition and then deal with function. Essentially, if you are arrested, or if there is a question related to you and a crime, you have a right to defense. That means someone who will advocate on your behalf, who will seek to avoid your conviction, and I guess I will back up and even say, sometimes hope to avoid your being actually indicted, or for that matter, even charged with a crime. And a defense attorney, in its simplest term, is a bodyguard, if I can paint you a picture. And we would often say, you want to get your bodyguard involved as soon as possible, if there are any signs of danger. So, and if you watch TV, you often hear people say, "Well, I want counsel." And I always encourage, I guess I can't hesitate, but say, they are a person who advocates and seeks to protect someone who is suspected or has been charged with a crime.
Excellent. Let me jump over this one, because I think this, and what we want to do is, we want to establish who people are, who the players are, and what they do. So when we get into the specific cases in Ferguson, or in Cleveland, or New York, we have a better idea of what everybody does, and what every position is. One of the things I want to ask to Sister Lisa's brother Eric is, when we talk about public defenders, a lot of people in our community don't have money for good defense attorneys, or I shouldn't, I don't want to sound negative, but they don't have money for high-priced defense attorneys. So a lot of times, they go into court with a legal, legal aid, or public defender. Oftentimes, when I, as a pastor, go in and talk to people in the community who've been arrested, and they have a public defender, one of their biggest gripes is, they feel like the public defender's office, or the public defender doesn't really take their case seriously. They don't show up sometimes, or they're late, or they only give them five minutes, or 10 minutes of time talking to them, and then they're gone, or they don't hear anything. And the families get frustrated behind it, too. Can you guys give us an idea, what is a public defender? Let me put their question, what is a, what, well, they, who pays a public defender, but how can they rely on, how can they, how can they rarely, how come they rarely help their clients, and most times, they don't seem to care what happens to the client? Talking about public defenders, let's talk about it.
Well, Lisa will probably give a more qualitative answer, you know, I consider myself a policy guy, and giving a knee-jerk response, I guess, but first of all, let me say this, public defenders are good, and people, and especially, if you don't have any money, you don't have a lot of choice. And that sounds cold, and sometimes impersonal, but it's the truth. So the first thing is, it's important to have a good attitude, because this is somebody who's involved with your representation and your well-being. But even more importantly, they pass the bar, and in some ways, often, public defenders are the purest form of legal advocate we have, because they're not doing it for the money. And quite often, you have people who are truly committed to the principles of justice. Secondly, one thing that you ought to understand in general, is that our legal system is not a quick process, okay? In fact, typically, your, take for instance, if you have a serious crime, it could be a year before you actually get to court, okay, and actually go to trial. And they're not supposed to rush. From day to day, in any three-day or week period, very little changes in a case. Now, quite often, you want to hear something, and you want somebody to contact you. Public defenders have large, they have more clients than most people have, and they have a heavy workload. It's not personal. But one thing that I think ought to be stated at first is that, public defenders are good. And in fact, I'll go further and say, depending on what your crime is, or what the crime you've been alleged to have committed, or you're involved with, they may be better than a private attorney, and here's why. Public defenders are at the courthouse, and often dealing with prosecutors on a daily basis, okay? And if they're, and it's just, they're human, one thing you gotta realize is, the court system is just like any other human system. They interact with the prosecutors day in and day out. And naturally, if you interact with somebody day in or day out, you're likely to have a better relationship, or at least a better understanding of that person. Are there some public defenders who are not the sharpest? Yes. But there are people who've paid a lot of money to private attorneys for poor defense. Okay, so I would probably argue, with the exception of, you know, very, very, very serious crimes, public defenders do a good job, and your attitude makes a lot of difference in interacting with an attorney.
I won't add too much more than that, except I think that people need to understand, whenever you're dealing with either a private or a public defender, and by the way, the county pays a salary, you know, you have to understand that, that you're one of many cases, and so it's not personal, the way that they treat you, and often, I'm related to doctors, some doctors have a better bedside manner than others. So I have people come to me and say, "Well, so-and-so did this, and they sent this to me," and I say, "Well, I wouldn't do that, but who knows," you know? So it just all depends on kind of what your relationship is like with that person, and understand going in, whether it's a private defense attorney or public defender, they have so many cases, I mean, I want to say, when I was at the prosecutor's office, they died at something like 10,000 cases a year. So those are only the felonies, not to mention the traffic tickets, and the thefts, and the misdemeanors. So when you think about it like that, you have all of these cases crammed into one system, you have public defenders who are working for not a lot of pay, and so they probably want to get through their docket as quickly as they can, and so, I mean, I think what Eric said was on point, just try to have a good relationship with them, try to talk with them. I think complaining to them, to their bosses isn't really gonna help, because they're probably under a lot of pressure, too, so it's just a system that we wish could be better, but you know, it's a system that we have.
One last one to the attorneys. We talk, we joke about Law &amp; Order. Is that, is that true to life?
I think that Law &amp; Order, the New York series, I think it's pretty true to life in the sense that the objections that they make are realistic, the case law that they cite is, 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 or the theories that they cite are pretty good, and I'm talking only about the courtroom, but as we move farther into this discussion, we're gonna be talking about things that happen in St. Louis, things that happen in New York, things that happen in Cleveland. We're talking about 50 different jurisdictions, so it's important that we remember that things that may happen in St. Louis, and in Missouri, or things that may happen in New York State can be different, the laws can be different, because each state has its own criminal laws. And so when you're talking about overall, you know, is Law &amp; Order pretty true to life? I think so, but you know, there will be those caveats that, that are different, because our laws may be different.
You should understand that it's based on, you know, when you go to the movies, you might hear them say, "Based on a true story." Well, in a movie, sometimes based on, like in the case of American Gangster, the cop in there wasn't married and wasn't going through a divorce in his real life, but they put it in the movie, because it's spiced up the movie. So what you have to understand is, Law &amp; Order and the things you see on TV are, they have the essence, but you, they are not factually accurate. So if you understand the principle is there, but the factual accuracy is not, that's the best way to think of it.
Okay, great, great. Moving on to our peace officers, and I thought that was interesting when you said earlier, but Eric, about peace officers and police officers. Law enforcement officials and peace officers, yes. I think one of the problems that we have, at least within our community sometime... I think one of the problems that we have, at least within our community sometime, is the fact that whatever police officer comes into our homes, into our communities, into where we are, usually it's mostly an adversarial role. They're either coming to arrest someone or they're coming to break up something that's going on. As you guys come to the situations, kind of talk to us about what is your, like, what is your thought process as you arrive on a scene? What's going on with, you know, in your heart, in your mind? How do you assess things like that? So there are things that we can pick up as part of your code, part of the things that you think about as you're loading up on a scene. Give us some insight into what your thought process is.
For one, it depends on the scene. There are so many different things that a police officer could respond to, from the littlest things such as a broken window report or minor fender bender car accident to the most serious thing of possible murder or something like that. So that is going to dictate the response of the officer based on the type of call that you're going on. If you know you're going on something minor, you're of course going to be a little bit more relaxed. You can never be completely relaxed because a lot of times the calls that you go on, you're very limited information. We have a small computer screen in the car and when you get dispatched somewhere, the radio may say, you know, "Go see on a neighbor complaint" or a disturbance. All you know is you're going on a disturbance. There may be one or two sentences. Neighbor was upset because of child calling names. So you know as an individual that there's so much more involved and you just can't wait to tell that to the officer when he gets there. But that's why sometimes it might seem that the officer is very brief or very, they just want to get to the point because there's so many levels of things that are running through their mind when they get there. They ask very specific questions and if you can help me with that, just, did I answer the question for you or not?
No, that's what, that's what we want to know. Because like I said, there's a wide range of calls. And so you have to gauge each call as you're going there based on that little bit of information.
Yeah.
And it's interesting that they only give you a little bit of information. Your life could be in danger.
Let me, let me add to that a little bit. And I'll do it from a training standpoint. I used to be yelled for a living and I would be marked on soul. Say, let's say, it's a domestic violence, okay, or a disturbance that you've been in the house before or once you hear the run go out, somebody may call you, say, "Hey, I was there last week," and it was all kind of problems. Husband was there, he was drunk assaulting everybody. So the officer usually will show up unless there's a reason to send more. And what we find oftentimes is we find a woman who is using.
A victim. All right, you find a woman who's a victim or children are upset, she's upset, at times the husband or the male is there and he's upset. So what you try to separate everybody, try to find out what's going on, calm folks down. It gets to be a source of irritation from me at times, particularly when we go to the same house time and time again. And he has assaulted her again and again. And what we do is we, in the old days, as you said, I'm 65, so I'm back there with you. But in the old days, we couldn't do anything. We'd just try to separate, "Mammy, do you want to file charges?" You know, "No," you know, for whatever reason. It'd always frustrate me. I know when I grew up, I never saw that from my mother and father. So, you know, those are the things that are in the back of your head. But now that choice has been taken from you. The preferred courts of action under domestic violence situations and arrests, your arrests are primary aggressive. So you don't have a choice now. And that's, I think it's the best way to handle that situation. Women are afraid for a variety of reasons. They think that they'll get retribution after an arrest is made, after they get out of jail, come back home, or even if they're ordered out of the house by the court, that doesn't necessarily always keep them out. So my concern had always been, do we take care of the problem the right way? And that's to arrest the primary aggressor and use them to make, and take him off to jail. He's got to go. There's a court, the system says you're going to go to jail. In the meantime, the female can go and get restraining orders, protection orders, the whole nine yards and try to take herself safe. So again, there's a variety of reasons for the way they respond. We try to train our people to respond to every possible situation as we've seen it over the years. Sometimes we can talk, talk to folks and leave and everything will be okay. It's not just always the husband, wife. Oftentimes it's children who are in adversary relationship with their mother or father or a grandparent. And they're abusive. It's amazing how much you see from abusive standpoint, particularly from grandparents who are taking care of kids for whatever, for a variety, again, a variety of reasons. So we try to settle the things down, calm them down. It helps at times if you have a knowledge of what's going on and you've there, been there before and, you know, Johnny's acting up again because of this or because of that and you try to address that particular component. But overall, we try to lower the expectations, to lower the problem and deal with it. You don't really go there to arrest anybody unless it's absolutely necessary.
Okay, the biggest thing is, I get associated with if everybody, does everybody in this room knows, know what's behind that white door? Nobody knows. We probably can imagine there's something behind that door. Somebody in the past year could probably give you a hint. But do you know for sure what's inside? What is all inside that room which you're going to have to deal with when you go inside that room? That's what police officers deal with in every single call they go on. Like Lieutenant said, most of the calls we get are very, very limited information. So you have an officer who's been trained to deal with, to know how to say, to be able to adjust to whatever situation's behind that door. Because there are times, we'll get a call on the computer, they'll come in on the computer and ask, "It's just a neighbor dispute." But by the time we've gotten there, which is 10, 15 minutes depending on traffic, things could have changed, things could have gotten worse, a lot of times, the parties are separated, we don't find anybody. But the thing that people must understand about law enforcement and the job that we do, most of the time when an officer, he may look mean to you when he shows up, it's because he's got a lot of things running through his mind. Because he has to worry about policy, his training, how to deal with the situation, still be empathetic, still deal with the problem. And still, you never know what's going to happen when he is there. So the things that police officers think about is, how do I keep myself safe first? No matter what it is. Because in every situation that we go to, every call that we go to, there's a gun. My gun. Okay? And as we learned in Ferguson, just because it's on my side doesn't necessarily mean it's wrong, it's going to be main line. So that's what we're thinking about whenever we go on the call.
Anybody have any questions?
The first police officer spoke a lot about sort of this discretionary things versus policy. How much discretion does a police officer have in determining, "Oh, I need two police officers, I need four," or in the case of Cleveland a couple of years ago, "I need the whole city," versus the policy aspect of it? Where is the mindset from?
We have a category system. Every type of call that we try, we try to list in our policies. We have 10 codes that we use and there's calls that are the type of different. It could be a fight, it could be a disturbance, it could be an accident. Everything's prioritized, but then there's also the limited amount. Basically on a report run, you're going to get one officer to take a report. Some of you may have even filed reports on the phone now or online. If it's a prior, if it's a higher priority run, there's a likelihood there could be, say it's a burglary, it's a rape, it's a, it could be a shooting, you're going to get maybe two to three to four officers. It just, sometimes it depends on how many officers are in the area and available. Cops want to work. So they know something's going on, they're going to gravitate to that area. If it is a, the highest priority call we have, which is an officer in trouble call, you're going to get a lot of officers. And the reason why is because an officer's hurt or an officer needs help. But there are policies that state, and it's flexible, but it's also, it's also based upon what the supervisor thinks. If I'm listening to the radio and I'm hearing more and more cars, officers marked on a particular run, and I'm looking at the computer as officers have updated the information, and I know that I have a whole lot more calls stacking up, this is the busiest area, this is the busiest site of town, the north side. So my job as a supervisor is to make sure that I'm not allowing so many calls to end up on one run on the other side of town and then I have a bunch of calls go out on the other side of town where I don't have any officers over here. So supervisor has to control that. The officers that are at the scene also can dictate that, but they also know that if you don't need another officer there or another two or three officers there, it's your responsibility to clear those officers so they can be available for other calls. But we do have policies that dictate, that give us a jumping point for our communication technicians and the radio.
Someone else have any questions?
First of all, I want to say that people being here has been, so far, really getting information. I appreciate that. And then in light of everything that's going on with the nation right now, I still, in my heart, feel like police officers are good. I don't feel like when I see them, I'm afraid or, you know, and I try to teach my boys that they are here to help us and they're not bad guys. If you see a police officer, go to them for help. But I just want to get into what's going on in our nation right now as far as with Ferguson and even back with George Zimmerman and all that. It's a three-part question. And you two kind of talked about it a little bit, the gentleman and the man on, the young lady, that even getting charged in the first place, getting indicted, those things like that, that for the average American, of course, we don't have that knowledge. And the killings and the shootings, I have my thoughts on those. The ones that got into altercation with the officer and maybe he pulled his gun out. I don't know for sure about that, but I know what I'm hearing. The one that was choked, George Zimmerman, that acted like a police officer and he got off. I mean, from the beginning of those things where somebody wasn't even charged. How do, I mean, the officers that weren't charged or when they were taken to court, you know, it was so secretive and nobody knew anything about it and it was like a big public announcement that they got off. And it definitely made me, you know, we were sitting by the TV watching these things and it had gotten to the point, by the third time, I was just negative. I'm like, you know what, I'm not surprised he got off. How does the average American either, A, know why it's, the person hasn't even been charged? What about just bare bone, common sense? I understand that every city is different and every state has different laws, but what about this general right and wrong? This person was, you're looking at the video, you're looking at, I mean, because now I'm even at the point that if you do have a cell phone camera and you do, you see what's going on and you hear the language and the lingo, and they still get off. So what is the point of officers, you know, having cameras on themselves if it still is going to go in favor of, it's common sense, they were wrong, this person was right? I mean, is it the money that has to do with it? Is it because they are a police officer and they do get, I mean, to me, some of those things, especially in case of the George Zimmerman, how is he walking free? How's the one that choked the guy to the point that I didn't see anything with that? I mean, I understand, this is what I keep hearing, is they have to follow the law. Well, how can these laws be changed? What about common sense, bare bone basics of this is right and this is wrong? Because I have three boys that, you know, I'm just like, you know, what do I tell them? I don't know. That's why I'm here today. Because I want to talk about that. That's what I was.
Well, and some of this is a almost thought-out, emotional and almost knee-jerk response, but I'm trying to be efficient with it anyway. First off, one thing that I can say is a rule of life that you can teach your sons is whenever you encounter a law enforcement officer, seek to de-escalate and calm the situation. He is in total, assume that he is in total control because like anyone else, the way someone, if some, even if I'm wrong in approaching somebody, if they then also approach, respond to me in a negative way, it escalates the situation. So, and I'm a southern, I'm 53, but I grew up in Georgia and even in coming to Ohio. You know, my father was a military officer and he was just big about de-escalating situations because we literally, I mean, I can remember riding through a Klan rally. And I say that from the standpoint that there are certain presumptions in society and what your sons want to do is create an image that as much as possible makes them non-threatening. There's no need, as simple as I can put it is this, there's no need to appear threatening to a person who is licensed to carry a gun. That's just a fundamental rule of life. There's no need to be, now, as it applies to, there's a difference between wrong, illegal and what can be proved. Okay? Sometimes I have people say to me, "Well, that person spoke to me, that police officer, the way he spoke to me was really mean, was really nasty." That's it. That might be true and that might be wrong, but it's not illegal. He might have had a bad day, he might have been late for work. I mean, I came in here with a bad attitude because I was late. The praise and worship made a difference, but most people don't have an opportunity to listen to any praise and worship. So, and I'm being serious about that. Sometimes it's just, and sometimes you've got to understand that that person, you have a, you have, you have good lawyers and you have bad lawyers. You have good police officers, you have bad police officers. You have some people who are nobly committed to, in the law, in the legal practice, you have some people who are committed to the principles. You have some people who are just trying to make a dollar. It's just a job. And they're going to give you as little representation as they can for as much money as they can make because it's all about the profit margin. And we would hope that training and oversight and all of that would make a difference, but it doesn't. The biggest thing that I can say about the cases that you, is one specifically, if you can teach your sons or imprint to them, de-escalate the situation. That still doesn't mean they're going to be treated fairly. They still might be thrown up against the car, they still might be talked to in a way that they don't like. But what they have to understand is they have to do what's within their control. And understand that there's a difference between what happens and what can be proven. The court system never proves somebody innocent. The only thing we do is prove somebody not guilty. That's very important to understand about our legal process. It's got major, I should say, yeah, it has shortcomings. And it doesn't, it doesn't establish innocence. It only establishes or fails to establish guilt. There's a, there's a lot that goes on in between being guilty, being deemed not guilty and being innocent. And there's a big difference between the two. And we don't have a cure for that. We don't have a perfect system for that. I know that was kind of muddy, but there are several things and I tried to give you something practical. The other thing is this, contact a lawyer as soon as possible. You, you know, it's best to say, say nothing if you're not sure what's going on.
I wanted to address what you said too because you brought up the case of George Zimmerman versus kind of what happened in New York and what happened in Ferguson. And I just wanted to draw the distinction between a jury trial and a grand jury. And so a lot of people are saying, "Oh, the officer, I forget his name, the officer in St. Louis, well, said he was acquitted." And that's not technically correct. So what is a grand jury? A grand jury is a convening of a body of people who listen to basically summaries that are put forth by a representative of the police department to determine if there is enough to charge someone. So typically, and we're only talking felonies now, so typically if Officer Bridges or Sergeant, sorry, Sergeant Bridges were to pull me over for speeding, he could say, "You know what? I clocked her," or I'm sure that would be low view, "but, you know, I clocked her, she was going, you know, 70 in a 65 mile per hour zone, you know, I have enough that I think that she committed this charge, so I'm going to go ahead and write her ticket." It doesn't necessarily happen that way with felonies. With felonies, the way that they charge you is by an indictment and that goes through the grand jury process. So the grand jury is convened every day just about here in Franklin County. And I'm only talking Franklin County, it could be different in Ankaugah County, Hamilton, Seneca County, it could be different everywhere. But here in Franklin County, the grand jury convenes every day. Grand jurors are pulled from the people who vote. So if you are called for jury duty, regular jury duty, you might also be called for a grand jury duty. And so I want to say about 12 people at a time will serve on a grand jury, however they call, bunches of people, because the grand jury session is for three months. Let me get that right. Yes, for three months. So there are basically four grand jury sessions a year, three months each. Some people are retired, they can serve for the entire three months, others can only get a week off of work. So what happens is, and I'm giving all the secrets now, what happens is the prosecutors prepare the cases for a grand jury. So say for instance, I have a person who is prepare the cases for grand jury. So say for instance, I have a person who is charged with possession of cocaine. I take that case to the grand jury, someone from the police department will read the summary. Based on what they hear, the grand jurors decide, based on that summary, is there enough to charge this person? Not are they guilty, are they innocent? Is it just enough to charge as in when Sergeant Bridges would give me a ticket? After that, the case is indicted and that person is firmly charged, then it starts going through the process. And then if you want a jury trial, if you're charged, you can have a jury trial. You want to plead guilty, you can plead guilty, that sort of thing. So that's important to know that when it comes to the grand jury process, that really is just the process of charging someone. So the fact that they didn't do it in St. Louis, I mean, I know that there were issues, but the fact that they didn't do it in St. Louis doesn't necessarily mean that if the same situation were presented here, a person wouldn't be indicted, an officer wouldn't be indicted. And let me just say, I know it was the policy of Ronald O'Brien, who's our county prosecutor, to put all officer involved shootings, I want to say, before the grand jury. That was the policy when I was in the office. I'm not sure if it's still the policy. And maybe the officers can speak to that. But I know that every single officer involved shooting is taken before the grand jury. Not necessarily to see if the officer should be indicted or not, but to see if what happened was fair and equitable. So just know that that process is going on here in Franklin County, even if you don't hear about it.
I've been involved in three shootings in my career. Two people died, one person's paralyzed. And I'll explain to you, we're human beings. All of us here, us in law enforcement, we're human just like you are. No police officer gets up wanting to go to work to shoot someone because of what we're put through by our department. It's not a matter of, I'm going to go out here, I'll get involved in the shooting, and all right, well, I just go home. What happens is, is we're basically treated like the public is, to a certain extent. And that's here in Columbus, Ohio. We have a certain team of detectives that come out that are trained in dealing with police involved shootings. They come out, they investigate, they talk to witnesses, they bring forensic people out, the coroner's office will come out if the person's deceased. This group of people, they put that packet together, they do the investigation, they send it through their chain of command for review to make sure it's all, everything's included. No decision is made by the police department at that point. It's sent to the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor's office, which is Ronald O'Brien, makes the determination if it goes before the grand jury. And he pretty much sent them all before the grand jury. That is the citizens that make that decision. I know it's a private sealed situation and that's a debate that's probably going to rage on whether or not grand jury should be in private or not. But I cannot, you cannot imagine what goes to a police officer's mind when they take a life. Whether it's purpose in the course of duty, if it's in an accident, we will go through the same things you would go through if you took a life. Especially if it's a, if it's a teen. The officer can fill in his mind that he did everything he was supposed to do. He followed his training. He believes that what he did was right. But the officer's still going to be gutted. We've had police officers, you may have just seen a recent story on the news where an officer wasn't able to come back to work because psychologically it ended his career. And he was completely justified. And this was a shooting at the Al Rosa Villa. You may have heard about the guy that the rock started, was killed, and the officer came in and had to, had to use deadly force on him. This is not something that's taken lightly by us as officers or by the city of Columbus or by the division. It's a serious, more serious thing to do. As for what's going on in the country right now, and I want to, I want to caution people with cameras. Cameras don't capture everything. And sometimes cameras do lie. What I mean by that is, if I am a camera to this side of the room, this side of the room erupts in a fight. The camera's over here, are you going to see what's going on over here? You're going to hear it, but you're not going to see it. But you're going to assume what's going on, right? In actuality, if I pan over, it may not just be a fight, it's maybe people yelling and screaming. The problem that we're finding with cameras is everybody's rushing to this idea of cameras. And the problem is with cameras, like I said, the media puts things on television that are on a sale. The media's never going to tell you the full story. Now, in the case of Eric Garner, I don't know a whole lot about, I've studied the Ferguson case really closely, Eric Garner's case, I really haven't. But, and there's a question on here that deals with that. We could probably get to that. But the thing about it is, that film is examined and examined and examined and examined. Because do you want a police officer in jail who followed his training? Or a police officer who, you want, we want bad cops, that's who we want, right? And we want them off the police department. But with cameras, you've got to be really, really careful and say, okay, what happened outside of you?
Let me ask you, dovetail into that because I think this is kind of important also. Anybody else have a question? Please step right up here. With this advent of Facebook and everybody has a camera on the phone, it seems like daily, I look on Facebook, I don't look on every day, but whenever I do look on Facebook, you see so many incidences where young men are being accosted by police. What happens to you as a trainer? What do you say to the cadets or the police officers about how they approach people knowing there's probably four or five cameras, like you said, taking shots of just one particular thing? And, you know, it always, it seems to indict and incriminate them as to being abusive and being, you know, over the top. What do you say to the officers? Do you say, be careful, watch out for cameras?
Didn't mean to stop you there, but. I always told recruits, always operate on the street, everywhere you are as if there's a camera right here. Not just cameras from folks with cameras and cell phones, but we've got cameras in cruisers. We've got cameras that show what's going on outside the cruiser. We've got cameras inside the cruiser to look and can hear and see what's going on inside the cruiser. So my approach to that was always, number one, always do the right thing, always follow the train. What you see on Facebook is what, like you started saying, what happens to be recorded at that particular time. I don't know what's going on. I have no idea what's going on. It doesn't necessarily mean it's wrong, what you're seeing. It doesn't like the gentleman Joe Gardner who's, you know, choked in New York. I don't know, I can't, my personal opinion, that was wrong. You can't choke a guy and say, I didn't choke him, you know? But I'm looking, well, it looks like a joke to me, you know? But what the people in New York, New York saw, the grand jury saw, it's just, it amazes me. The same thing with Trayvon Martin. And I just, I can't speak to how that ends up the way it does. Only because, under, I can say only because it became notoriety, it became notable, it became, the money got involved, they got the best attorneys. And it happened to be in a neighborhood who maybe wasn't sympathetic, as they should have been. And it didn't turn out right in my book. I mean, that's what I said. But that's what, that's how I treat trained recruits. Operate as if that camera person's standing right behind you, right in front of you. The news media, they do their job. But you all know, if it leads, it leads. If they can show somebody laying in the street covered with a sheet or, you know, flashing lights, then it's going to, it's going to lead to stories. But that's what they do. So I don't indict them for that. That's what they do. But from a training standpoint, you do, and you treat people the right way, the way you were trained to do. What they do, they do it all the time. I will absolutely tell you no, they don't do it all the time. That's why we have internal affairs, right? That's why we have a complaint system. That's why we encourage folks to pursue the complaint system when they perceive themselves have been wrong. That's, that's how we do it.
Can I ask you one more question, you personally? Do you think with all that is going on right now, that it overall will make internal affairs for the police officers better, like in general? Because I mean, the president is involved. I mean, it's becoming a national buzz thing at this point. So do you think overall this would be a positive thing, even though life is lost, even though, you know, I mean, do you see this, you know, kind of turn some things around?
Anytime you can open, turn the light on in a room and expose what's going on in that room, it's a good thing. Particularly with controversy. I don't necessarily worry about who has something to say about what's going on in the country. The president, you know, I met the guy, great guy, coolest guy I remember. You know, but at the same time, that's his personal opinion about what's going on. I may agree with it, usually I do. But I may ultimately disagree with it. So it's not just him, it's you, you and you. It's you, it's what you think, not necessarily what the president thinks or somebody else who happens to be in front of a microphone thinks. We talked about, you talked about your son. So I've got a ten-year-old who saw the shooting in Cleveland, given the gun, the aerosol gun. And Bobby's just precocious as he can be. He's a doublehead, you know, I love him to death. But I noticed that, we went down to get Christmas lights and his guns were in the area where we store Christmas lights. And I asked, by the way, he's down here? And he said, Daddy, that kid got killed for playing with a gun. You know, and I'm a cop for, you know, all of the past thirty-nine years. So what do I tell my son? All right? So I got to have that conversation with him too. But because I still teach recruits, I went into this hundred and twenty-third class, started, I teach what's called core values. It's the basic premise of what we're all about at the police department. And I held this picture up, I passed it around. And I asked each recruit, because we train for our people, Dublin, Gahan, all Central Ohio agencies, what do I tell my son about how to interact with you? What do I tell him to say to you, to have you treat him with the respect that you should treat him? Because I guarantee you, if, and I point to somebody who doesn't look like me, if their son meets you, you may treat him differently. Okay, so, and I made each one a mantra. It was uncomfortable for him, that from a level through our training, no, no, no. You're not going to tell a ten-year-old through appropriate training. What do you tell a ten-year-old, because all of a sudden, he's no longer wants to play with his gun? We went to Anderson's for something and there's a police officer who I trained, and we were talking. And Bobby's always outgoing and introducing himself, but he stood real close to me, kind of held onto my hand. And at first, that was right after this Cleveland shooting happened. And I had all kinds of problems with that. But I had to sit down and tell him the best I could, the way a ten-year-old can understand, how he needs to be careful, how he interacts with, not just the police, but with anybody. You know, school officials, the bus driver, the folks at the store, you know, because the folks at the store may be the ones responsible for calling the police for something they perceive him to be doing wrong. So that's where our conversation starts. It started, went way beyond police.
This is for the law enforcement. Being a former military individual, we had steps, the training that we had to go through if we were presented with a threat. Do you guys have to go through certain steps in order to like deem a situation before it escalates to a, you know, life-threatening situation? And my question is, do you guys still carry the tasers in the nightclubs? Do you have other alternatives, a setting always having to pull out your weapon to, you know, to, you know, recharge situations?
Oh, yes. There are many, many steps involved in the levels or the use of force. Just the way we classify it with Columbus is that there are eight levels. It starts at zero and it goes to eight. Eight being deadly force, the absolute top. And zero, just meaning officer presence, that I'm just standing there talking to you. That's a level zero, how we do it. Certain things, our, our response is going to be, we respond to the threat or the perceived threat that we think it is. If we ask someone to do something, please, you know, go into this room, we need you to leave. If that's not working, we'll ask the way a little bit, get out of here, or go. I'm still using my verbal level and I'm still in the level zero. If they don't, if I were to tell a person, I need you to leave here. And they're, and they're just like, no, I'm not going. Well, what options do I have? Am I going to pull my gun out? No. And shoot them. I'm going to have to put hands on them though. Okay? Now that goes to the level one. If I can't get the person to do what I want, I'm going to either escort them or grab them or pull them out into another area. That's a level one. If they start to resist, I have to meet their level or I'm going to lose the fight. I'm going to lose the whole reason we're there. The community's not going to have any confidence in the police if the police can't do the job they were called there to do. You have to think of it like a set of stairs. And if the citizen is on step two, I have to be on step three. I have to always remain one step higher. And I hope I answered for you, there are many levels that we have to respond to. And we just try and go one higher. We're not going to jump all the way to deadly force unless, it doesn't mean we can't walk into a room and instantly have to go to it. If our, if our lives or someone else's lives are threatened, we have to go right to the eighth level, then we do. But hopefully, it doesn't reach that. But another thing is, you may be at one level and have to reduce it. You could be at a level four or say, and have your taser out and getting ready to use it, or a baton, and yes, we do carry those, like you say. And then all of a sudden, you can put it down and de-escalate everything and calm the situation down. Go back to talking if you realize the threat is over.
We absolutely instituted what's called verbal judo a few years ago. Whereas, you'd be amazed, and I'm not, simply, I'm not a cop anymore. But you would be amazed what happens in people's houses and when you stop folks, when folks just go off on you for no reason. It's like, just calm down. Listen, here's why I'm here. This is what I'm trying to do. You start talking to them, the goal is to out-talk them. Just talk them down. If they get sad, let them talk. If they get frustrated, let them, let them talk. And we take, we try to take as long as we possibly can in order to let these folks talk and calm down and still let us control the situation. When I say that, I mean, you know, you've just started a fight in this lady's house. You're here, this is a party, you're not invited. It's time to go. You have to leave. They don't want to leave. I don't have my cousin. It's time to go. You know, one of the funniest, guy, he cheated on his girlfriend. That's a war story. Very attractive young lady. And, and she found out and she said, you have to go. And he moved everything out and except it was time to just close the door, he just couldn't do it. So she called the police. My partner and I showed up and said, well, sir, she wants you out of her house. You got to go. And he goes, well, I still got stuff here. What do you have here? He had an old pair of shoes that he put some, some, the black asphalt sealer down on, just covered his stuff. And he said, I want my shoes. Okay, let's get your shoes and let's go. And we literally had to physically force the man out of the house. And because she wasn't hearing, I'm through with you. It's over, it's done with, get out of here. And we took the guy out to the porch, she closed the door. And I said, what did you do on it? He goes, look at her, I can't give that. Well, you had to give it. Yeah, you do. Go, leave. You have to go back. And a couple days later, he went back, you know, again, trying to, trying to make his case. Two other officers went there. This time, he fought them, physically fought them. They had to fight him and cuffed him up and took him off. And he had a cut on his head and scratches on his, on his hands and wrists. And I always say, if people were, neighbors are watching this, fortunately, the neighbors knew this guy, they knew what was going on. But I always say, that's lawful but awful. Nobody wants to see anybody fighting on the street. You know, the chief of police in Houston, Texas, Chuck McClellan, great guy. But that's what he said. Those types of things are lawful but awful. You just don't want to have to do it and people shouldn't have to see it. But it's part of what we do.
I'm trying to figure out ways to, you know, protect our people now. And one of the questions I have, do you have curfews or do curfew, I mean, I think there's some things that parents need to do also to make sure that their kids are safe. And, you know, so many times I see so many kids out at a certain age, to me, should not be out. But when the officer says something, it's something like, you know, we're going to go home or whatever, you're saying, you know, you're taking my rights away, I have a right to be out here. I don't know what rights anybody has. I don't know what rights people have. So I thought I'd need to get all this with that.
Well, two things I wanted to, these, these go together. One, in an ideal world, unless you were doing something suspicious, you do have a right to be out, okay? We don't live in an ideal world. And to give me an example, I'm an attorney, okay? Typically, and I was one, I've been in a white collar position either as a lobbyist or a lawyer for the past thirty years, thirty-two years. If I go to the courthouse and I'm looking bummy, I mean, it always cracks me up because sometimes the panhandlers don't, depending on how I look, they don't ask me for money, okay? I'm serious. And I've known this, both as a lobbyist, but in particularly as a lawyer. I get looked upon differently based upon how I show up, okay? And you, particularly as a black male, and I think probably my southern culture or raising probably, you understand that there's certain environments you manage and you have to manage. And it's so embedded in me, to give you an example, one summer I studied though, when I was in law school. And it's so embedded in me, to give you an example, one summer I studied, though, when I was in law school, like, well, every summer I studied over in Europe. And one of my Danish classmates, who had lived in the United States, said to me, he said, Eric, we discriminate over here, but not the way you're used to. And it was very interesting, because he, he understood, whenever I went into certain situations, I carried myself differently, because I anticipated being treated differently because I was black. And it was very interesting in Europe, because you were treated, one way because you're an American, and also, there's another shade of that because of, you were black, because you were treated differently than the black Africans, okay? There was even a distinction there. So what I say is that you have to manage that, and sometimes you can be right, I'll, I'll give you an example. I got pulled over one time, I had a headlight out, um, at about two fifteen in the morning, and I was moving some stuff, uh, out of my office, and, and my office now is not far from my house. Um, and you can imagine, I, I didn't feel like being stopped, you know, I'm like, I'm just trying to get back home, get in bed. You know, I've been working, I've been moving, physically moving stuff, all that. Officer says, you know, show me your, like, so I showed, you know, knowing I've got my stuff ready before, you know, when it comes up to the car. I'm making sure I keep my hands in a visible place. Because in fairness to, to officers, which I'm, I'm frequently not, I assume, when I run into an officer, I'm going to have a problem. So my premise is, how do I just de-escalate that situation? Cause I wanna give him every opportunity to do the right thing, cause I assume he's thinking wrong. He's thinking I did something wrong, or he wouldn't be, he wouldn't have pulled me over, or he wouldn't have stopped me. And he could be totally wrong, okay? I gave him my registration and, and license, and then he said, well, can I look in the back of your car? I said, do you have a reason, do you have suspicion, or is there anything that you can visibly see? Now, I know, because I know the law, I know there's some, there are certain rules in terms of, if it's not in plain sight, and you don't have a, you know, some reason for suspicion, you just need to let me go. But even in that, my thing is this, I had to say that in such a way, that it wasn't personally insulting to you. Okay, like, you're a dummy, you don't know the law, I know the law, and you can't stop me. Well, the reality is, he can stop me, and he could have searched me, even if he was wrong. And I've got to respect, or, or at least factor in his authority. Cause he can use his authority, even if he uses, even if he makes a bad judgment, okay? I'm still susceptible. It's like people say, can you sue somebody if they, uh, hit you in the crosswalk? You can, but it's much better to stay out of the crosswalk, because there's no guarantee you're gonna survive. And that's the way I try and explain these situations.
That's good.
Um, you can be right, but that's not necessarily the best outcome. And you have to do, sometimes you do everything in your control, and it still doesn't turn out well. But ask yourself, am I doing what's within my control? Because this is the reality. We, as human beings, and particularly between law enforcement and our community, we operate off some historic presumptions. And, um, Denzel Washington put it well, in New York, if you, if, I've spent time in, lived in DC, spent a lot of time working in New York, there are parts of time where you can't, you don't get a cab if you're going uptown. If you're a black male, you just, you don't get a cab, cabbies don't like to go certain places. And Denzel said, you know, I don't like it, and I feel, feel pretty frustrated, in fact, I think Chris Rock demonstrates it in his latest movie. Um, he said, but, we know that there are cabbies in New York who drive places and get kids. For me, it's an inconvenience. For him, it may be a matter of life and death. And I think that's the challenge that we face. And, and I don't necessarily see it, um, getting better, I just think it needs to be managed.
Uh, what I wanted to say, just getting back to your question about curfew, and, and let me say too, that I understand the, um, on the one hand, you have to be free to be you. You have to be free to allow your pants to sag if you want to, have your hair spiky, um, listen to loud music, rap, whatever. You know, I, I understand that, but on the flip side, I also get that the way that you present yourself is the way that you're perceived. But getting back to your question about curfew, what can we do for our young people, in addition to de-escalating the situation? Come to things like this, no, you're right. So, young people, um, I wanna say it's ten o'clock, and I'm gonna ask the officers, cause I don't do too many curfew cases. Um, it depends on age.
Anybody pretty much under the age of fifteen is fine.
Okay.
Anybody between fifteen and seventeen is midnight. There's nothing out after midnight but the cops.
Amen.
That's right. And, and let me say too, that a child can be out past curfew if the child is with its parent or a responsible adult. So not older brother who just turned eighteen, probably, but, you know, but, but a respectable adult. And so, and it goes to, to, you know, you just have to make sure that, don't jaywalk, um, don't put, pardon me?
How many kids can possibly get?
That, it.
Before you arrest, he's gonna break up.
It all depends, and I'll let the officers answer that, but I, I mean, you have a right to assemble, as long as you are, you know, not out past curfew. It can be thirty of you, maybe draw a little bit of a, um, I don't know, attention from the cops, but you can be out, with as many people as you want.
Yeah, it, with, with curfew with the kids, basically, like, we all grew up, what did our parents tell us? When the streetlights come on, you're coming to the house. If you got your driver's license, your parents wanted you in by midnight. That's pretty much the way that the curfew laws have gone in Columbus. We do enforce curfew, however, there's a process where the kids aren't gonna go to jail, they're, we're gonna be calling the parents to come pick the kids up. Uh, because we're gonna ask them, do you know where your child's at? If more than, nine times out of ten, most parents go, no, I don't, he's supposed to be back in the house, but he's not. Well, we found him, we can bring him to you, you wanna come get him. If it go, if it continues, then juvenile court will get involved, and it could go before a magistrate, an actual formal charge of curfew could be adjudicated by court. Um, how many people here shop at Easton? How many people here will not go to Easton on a Saturday evening?
Why? Why?
I work at Easton, special duty. And you asked probably the most important question so far. What can we do to protect our youth, so our youth are informed with knowledge? Show respect. I got cussed out by a ten-year-old kid Saturday night, and he says, mom hasn't seen this kid in two days. Now, the problem is, is that, and I'll give you a typical scenario, what we do. Easton, people need to understand that the laws pretty much pertain to public spaces. People don't understand the difference between public space, private space, public property, private property. Easton is private property, it is owned by someone. And what we deal with, and it carries over to how kids are dealing with, what kids are doing on the street, is when a police officer approaches a fourteen or fifteen-year-old teen, it says, hey, Easton's policy is, you're not allowed to have your underwear showing, you're not allowed to have your hood on, you need to take it off. And they say, I know the law, I can do it. Well, the law is right, they can do it, on public property. But on private property, where somebody owns that property, and they have a dress code and code of conduct, it's very simple, you do what you're told to do, or you're gonna be told to leave. And if you don't leave, that's when the officer goes and tells, escalates those steps that the lieutenant explained. You get a warning, you're told you have to leave, and if you don't leave, it's criminal trespass, there's a charge. If you remain on the property of another without their permission, you refuse to leave. A lot of situations that we're dealing with, with our youth right now, is a lot of these teens think they know the law, and they don't. And when a police officer, and I will tell you, we, we're, there are police officers out there, and I'll be far from remiss, to say that we don't have police officers with attitudes, cause we do. Do we have police officers that are racist? Yes, we do. Do we have police officers that racially profile? Yes, we do. Is it as big as the media's making it? No, it's not. However, if a police officer tells you to do something, you do it. And if you don't agree with it, get a hold of your parents, the parent comes in and they talk to us. At Easton, I love it at Easton, because they have the best surveillance equipment. I have gone into control center Easton many nights and showed parents, cause the parents will come in and immediately blame us, and say, we did something wrong to their child. We take them into the control room, we show them the video, you see for yourself, there's several different angles of what your child did. Parents need to, I, I hope that parents will come into the situation being open-minded. Some parents come in and wanna protect their child, say, my child didn't do nothing wrong, didn't do anything wrong. In today's society right now, we have a lot of young parents that were teens back during Rodney King, that are now parents. That that has carried over, and law enforcement has not done a great job in communicating what we do, why we do, and how we do it since Rodney King. A lot of times, we're not given a forum like this, a lot of times, the media doesn't wanna hear from us. So, the most important thing that a parent can do, and I've got a twenty-one-year-old kid in college right now, is tell your, is, is, is to tell your child, if a police officer tells you to do something, you do it, and you call me. And I'll come and I'll talk to the officer. But don't sass the officer, don't cuss the officer out. The newest thing now is just ignoring the officer like, officer, you ain't talking to me, you ain't talking to me. It gets to the point where we have to actually get in their face and say, I'm looking, I'm looking at you eye to eye. Parents gonna, we can only do the best that we can, and hope that when they leave the house, they're gonna be surrounded by good people. Doesn't always happen. But, let me, let me say, jump in real quick to at this point. Because I think what happens a lot of times are, sometimes these young kids, they're not taught how to be manageable and respectful. And a lot of times, you know, you have to get in their face. Imagine us, as parents, sometimes have to get in our kids' face, amen?
Right.
Let's just be honest. And, and so, it bleeds out into the community. The problem we have, and I think you just told earlier, Sergeant, is that there's the, the communication between the police officers, and the parents, and the children, is lacking. And, and, and give you an example, I was looking at even like, the situation with Eric Garner, okay? We all see those videos, and we assume that chokehold killed him. You know, a, a lot of our question is, what could he have done? I mean, cause it didn't seem like, to me, he resisted arrest, he just didn't wanna be touched. And unfortunately, a lot of times, people will say, you know what, this is my space, I haven't done anything wrong, I don't need to be touched. And police officers, like you said, he's on the second level, they gotta go to the third level, which means, he's waving his hands, flailing, somebody could get punched, get hit, or whatever, because they don't know what he has. So therefore, they begin to take him to the ground. My guess, my statement to you today is, you know, as, as parents, we know some of our kids, let's just be honest, we're all, and I'm gonna have a look around, but some of our kids are bad. Alright, and so it's hard even for us to chastise them and correct them. And then they go out on the street to Easton Mall, Easton Mall or wherever, and then they gotta get checked. I think it behooves us as parents, that when I get a call that my grandson, or my children who are grown, thank God, uh, would get in trouble, not to run in to be the savior for my child, but to come in and say, tell me what happened. Because if anything, I wanna be a better parent. Eric?
Pastor, um, the things I'm gonna agree with in principle, the bottom line is respect, okay? Even, he's due a certain amount of respect, regardless of even how he acts, because he's wearing that badge.
Right.
Okay, now, but for me, that's a matter of self-preservation. Because, um, actually, my belief is, because he wears that badge, he's held to a higher standard. And, and actually, has to get more different, because you're a public servant. You know, I learned, you know, sometimes the hard way, that as a lawyer, I'm held to a higher standard when I contract with people, and the people may be ignorant, and I, I'm responsible even for their ignorance. This is, this is the challenge. Whenever deadly force is used, there's a very, very, very high standard. And the real, uh, you know, I'm really of the conviction that the, the responsibility has to be on the part of the person who can use by authority a firearm, okay? This, this is the problem, particularly with, with deadly force. Once it's done, it's done.
Right.
So the, 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 the thing that I wanna just keep reinforcing is, the critical thing is avoidance. The reality is, I think, and please give me the correct figure, I think it's, it's a, it's a, I think it's less than ten percent, I actually think it's less than five percent, of officers who draw their firearm, at one point in time, I think it was around three percent, who draw their firearm in the course of their career to discharge. That's a very, very, of, of any profession, think about it. That's a very, very small, and when I say course of career, most law enforcement officers are careerists. You know, they'll, they'll do seven to, to twenty years easily. But.
Nine years. Not really.
But, but, but the big thing, the big thing is this, my father, um, just encouraged me in saying, you need to make sure that you stay alive. We can file a lawsuit, but you need to make sure that you stay alive.
That's good.
And that's the first thing, and part of that may be giving respect, part of that may be realizing that this law enforcement officer may be wrong. Okay, but that, that, we can deal with that issue later on. And I think that's where we get into, I believe in cameras, you know, because I believe that the great, it doesn't perfect things, but it helps. At least it gives us something to debate. Anybody else have any questions? Brother Jesse?
Okay, um, in terms of, I actually have two, but I'll just ask one per, come on, the more pressing one first. In terms of training and, and recertification and marksmanship and all that, the targets, why is it in terms of the targets that, the targets are only, or they perceive, or perceived to be only the kill shot, center mass, center mass, as in, when you're looking to discharge, or why are there, in the, the scope of what you're shooting at for your target, are there no arms or legs to, to, uh, to, to take someone down, opposed to take someone out? And I know there's, you know, differences in the situations, but.
The easiest way we train them, we, officers are required certified four times a year. Right. And they shoot from different, five yards, fifteen, twenty, fifty yards. We train to hit center mass, alright, and that's the torso, that's the body. Anti-oplely, we, I mean, I can't, I, I'm, I fire distinguished expert, that's very good. But that's at a range where I'm comfortable, it's quiet, I'm not under stress, I'm not under time, I can place each one of my shots. If I'm in a situation on the street, I don't have that situation to deal with. If you shoot, you shoot the center mass, if you look at a tree back there, you know, the biggest part of the tree, that's what you would aim at, the center mass. Playing something, if you should have hit somebody in the leg, you, I guarantee you, you wouldn't shoot for it, unless you're just that close to them. The use of the deadly force is specifically designed as the, the last step, the last step. And I say that remembering, this recently, I saw a North Carolina State Trooper, some, South Carolina State Trooper, stopped a, a young black guy, and told him, you know, for whatever it was. He said, you know, where's your license? He says, the car, he said, give me your license. He reaches in the car, he gets licensed, shoots. And he goes, oh, I'm, he was afraid, that's what he said, when it was all over done. Well, here's a guy with a couple bullet holes in him, thank God he wasn't killed, but he says, I was afraid, you know, and he was from me, closer to me than.
He was him.
And he fired a number of roofs, a number of rounds, and it still only hit the guy twice. And he's shooting, I'm sure it's center mass. But my point is, it's difficult to control that shot now. Fortunately, it's certain sense that he was arrested that day, okay, for, for.
Who was arrested?
The officer, was, was, was charged for what he did. And, and, and you ask, why, why? And he's gonna have to go to trial, his, his defense has already started to come out. He was involved in the deadly support at one point in time, where a partner was shot, he was shot at, and he's, I know he's gonna say, almost at the logical standpoint, put him right back, and he, he was afraid. But you know what, if you're afraid, this isn't the job to have, okay? We, you know, we, we try to push every button you have. And I saw a lieutenant once that, um, we, we try to find every flaw as a police candidate you have in trying assault trouble, because we wanna make sure that you can deal with the things that we put you through in the academy. I don't use a whole lot of profanity, but in the ABS rooms, when they, when they interact, they learn how to break up family fights and, and, and confrontation. The officers that interact with these, they, they cuss them, simply because that's what you see on the street. I don't want you to go through six months in street, in the academy, and come out and be shocked because somebody used your name, okay, called you out his name, so, that's what we do. So, that's what we do, but we don't use that as a matter of training, you know, I don't, I had a lot of big things for him, but, and, and, and he wasn't one of it, but, those are the types of things we're looking at. So, we shoot, you know, we shoot, we train to shoot center mass, period. Simply because that's the easiest, easiest place to hit.
I mean, real, real quick on that, the reason why too, is because most of the time, we're out in the snow, rain, people are, there's a fight, there's a struggle, somebody may be running. I mean, it's easier to hit the bigger, bigger portion of the body.
And if I could just add one thing to that for the shooting, when it comes to deadly force, we don't shoot to kill, but it's not our intention is to kill someone. We shoot to stop the aggression that they are doing. Whatever that person is doing, if, if, if is endangering my life or someone else's life, I'm shooting them to stop their aggression. And once it's stopped, it's over.
One other quick question within that, um, I have a separate issue, but I was thinking as well, um, more so for the attorney side of it, I guess, with me. Because I don't remember recall the position title that the gentleman had in Ferguson, who was presenting the case to the grand jury. Um, but it was said, uh, it was said on, on a number of occasions that, what, because of the position he holds, he was very close with the police officers. Do you all believe that, uh, there should be a separate quote-unquote unbiased per person used to prosecute in terms of police investigation? Kind of like they do internally with internal affairs and that people who generally, from my understanding, have continued, continued relationship with, with the officers?
Um, I don't think that that's a, a bad idea to kind of have somebody who is, um, you know, bringing a special prosecutor for, for, for situations like that. I think that that's an excellent idea. Um, with regard to the prosecuting attorney in St. Louis, um, I know he himself did not present the case to the grand jury. He had assistant prosecutors in his office present the case to the grand jury. But I still think it brings it to question the whole, you know, um, prosecutors and police officers being very closely intertwined because of the work that they do. So I think that's an excellent idea to bring a special prosecutor anytime you have something like that. I know, for instance, um, whenever, I have a case right now where, um, a young lady who works for the court system, her daughter was charged with an offense. And because she, um, works closely with the prosecutors, they brought in a special judge at least, not a special prosecutor, but a special judge. So, you know, precedent for that type of thing, um, exists, and I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay, Trinity?
Um, let's say that I look like a criminal and there's one out there and you see me, and you, you say, Eric, come here, and I put me down in the car. Um, and I'm not the guy, what, like, what happens if that person gets like all crazy and, you know, then even though it's not the right person, you still get them, you know, like me, I'll be calm and, you know, just let him go, away, go. But, um, if, if that person went crazy, what would you do if they were trying to like to run away or like try to get, you, get you off of them or drag the handcuff, handcuffs on them, but you can't, even though you're trying to, but you're trying to run away, what would you do?
That's a very good question. Um, it's, it's almost like what we have to do. Like suppose we're looking for someone who just robbed a store, and they said, he's wearing a red shirt with a bow tie and he's got glasses, and he's going that way. And we go and we see two people like that. Do we just stop one of them? No, we gotta stop them both, we gotta determine what's going on and find out. So, if we stop them and one of them runs away and the other doesn't, do we let him run? It's our job, we have to go get him. So if we're chasing him down and he turns around and wants to fight, we're gonna have to fight. And we fight him, and if, and if he pulls out a weapon, we have to pull out a weapon, it can turn into a huge mess. But the law says that we are allowed to do that. We can use whatever force is reasonable to stop someone, to detain them. Then imagine if we went through all that and then we turned out that he wasn't the guy who did it, but the one who didn't run. What would happen? Nothing. It was just a big waste of time and it didn't have to be that way if he would have just cooperated from the get-go. But we have a job and we have a responsibility to stop that person, so we have to have the legal right to do it. So if they're gonna bring it, we're gonna bring it right back, and we have to. Alright?
I, I think what it's asking is, does the guy who was not originally doing the crime, does he still get punished?
No, not at all. As, as soon as we find out, well, yeah, if he went, if he hurt an officer, yeah, he's gonna go to jail. But as soon as we determine that the person was not involved in that crime, we brush them off, let them go, sorry, you know why we gotta do it. We try to explain it to them of, of why we had to do what we did. And, you know, hope they understand that they fit that description.
That, that, that's a good question though, because it goes back to that interaction. A lot of peo-, a lot of people end up having problems, not because they did something, but because of their interaction with the police. And then it becomes disorderly conduct, um, when there was no underlying charge. You know, and their attitude was, well, there was no reason for them to stop me. Rightly or wrongly, that's their job, is to stop and question. And that issue has gone before the court, it's gonna continue to go before the court. There's a case called Matt v. Ohio, they got argued in Cleveland, um, that deals with stopping tricks. You know, when, because an officer has a right to stop and question you. The issue is, when does that go too far?
Is your man here, of course?
Yes.
Can an officer go to jail?
Can we please?
Can an officer be indicted?
Absolutely.
So how can you not be indicted first?
Well, well, tell, do you know what is murder? Murder is something that has elements to it. Okay, so, now we're gonna deal with, because, um, unless even since we're in a church, let's deal with this biblically. One of the Ten Commandments says, thou shalt not kill, and that proper interpretation is thou shall not murder. Okay, but there's a lot of killing in the Old Testament. Now, the distinction is this. Intent and motive, okay? Lot of times, people die and it's unintentional. Is it intentional or bad judgment? That's the difference between what's called murder and manslaughter. And, and I'm getting a little technical, but I say that because we throw out terms, we say stuff a lot of the time. And it goes back to something that he said. He said, do you think that I get up, that an officer gets up in the morning and says, I wanna go out here and shoot somebody? More often than not, my belief is, you have somebody who's either poorly trained or mentally fragile, like the officer in South Carolina, or the officer in Cleveland, um, who said, who shoots somebody out of fear. See, we're all human. And one of our most fundamental instincts is to stay alive. Whether you're a police officer or whether you're not a police officer. And that's why I share with you, one of the best ways you can survive or stop is to be respectful. You still might get roughed up, you still might get thrown around, but you're alive. And then you can file, you can go to Lisa and file a lawsuit. Um, but your objective, both the police officer and the citizen, your objective is to get up, go about your way and come home at the end of the day. Um, so, murder is, is, is something that's not easily determined. That's why we have trials. And I don't even throw the term out. And usually what I say is, officers don't intend to murder somebody, but they're either negligent, irresponsible, or just in a human standpoint, afraid when they use their gun.
I just have a quick one, was an officer approaching a group and says, break it up. What does that, does that mean? Because I spoke to my grandson and four other little young men to the mall to go to the movies. And after the movies, they were loud and laughing and, you know, grinning at the girls and all. The officer said, break it up, they all spread it out. But they came back to the door because I had to pick them up. And the officer said, oh, you're just not gonna listen to me, I'm gonna have to take you boys downtown. So, how far, I mean, we really need to tell our kids what things mean. And that's where I'm at. If we're saying, break it up, does that mean that they need to get away and don't come back together? Is it twenty feet, is it thirty feet, you know, what is it?
Which mall were you at?
Well, he wasn't here. So, but I need to give him some information as to what he needs to do. I didn't know if they needed...
I mean, which mall were you at?
It's a real, it's not a mall here in Columbia.
But, but to answer your question, the, and, and some things are not situational, because you can't always give, but there are principles.
Yeah, that's my fault.
Communicate respectfully. Even if the person isn't acting nice.
Well, they did.
Communicate respectfully, because...
They said, yes sir, and all, but then they moved and off walked in different directions, but they came back together at the door where I had to pick them up at.
Com, com, my, my thing is, officer, we are waiting on my grandmother to pick us up. Commu-, right, communicate respectfully and sometimes give more information than required. Okay, sometimes you give more information than, I do that quite frequently. I'll give more information than, than is required. When the officer pulled me over at about two, I said, look, I've been moving stuff, I've been working all day. So, in some way, I gave him some context for the boxes in my backseat. And the fact that it was two in the morning, I looked, look, I've been moving in and out of my office, I've been moving all day. I didn't have to give him that information. And most of the time, I'll be honest with you, I tell people, consult a lawyer. You know, if you really think that something happened, say little to nothing and consult a lawyer. But there's some things, uh, you know, it, it is a biblical principle, a soft answer and turn it the way right.
Anybody, Sister Lisa? Then we're gonna wrap up here.
Um, this may be for Attorney Lisa or Attorney Eric. Um, when children are picked up by police and either taken to the station or even sometimes on the scene, are they allowed to be questioned in depth without a parent or an attorney present? Is it, is it a rule, because I've heard before this rule, that a parent can be, has to take a thing, I want you to call my parent, my parent needs to be present. Do they have that right to do that?
Um, in Ohio, there's no requirement that a, that a, that a parent be present when a child is questioned by police. So then it calls into question, um, because the police, when they have a child in custody or anyone in custody, meaning that person is not free to leave, that's what a custody means, they have to read that person their Miranda rights. And so we all heard that, you have to remain silent, yada, yada, yada. So it's incumbent upon police when they pick up children, um, to read them their Miranda rights if they're going to question them, but here's the trick. If the police officers don't ask you something, but you volunteer it, then they can write it down all they want and that stays in. You know, you can't throw that out, out of court. So, it's gonna be really important for, you know, um, and, and it's hard to do because I ask some of my juvenile clients, you know, before I ask about constitutional rights, the first question is, do you know what the Constitution is? Have you studied it in school? And so, you know, you have all of those issues that come into play, but police really should read the children their rights, especially if they are accused of, you know, a really, really serious crime, like a robbery or something like that. But the answer to the question is yes, the child can be questioned without having their parents present. The child can say, I want to have my lawyer present, which, you know, children usually don't say that, you don't have a lawyer. Or I want to have my parent present. But the key phrase is, I want to have a lawyer present, and then shut your mouth. Because if you continue to talk, even if you ask for a lawyer, they can continue to write down everything that you say. So you have to say, I want a lawyer, discuss for children and adults, and then shut your mouth. You can answer, you know, date of birth, where you live, all, anything like that, anything else. I would just recommend that you just not say anything, just continue to ask for your attorney.
And I will, I will, I will, I will say something to that as a detective, as a sergeant in the detective bureau. It's even, this is one of those situations where, even though we can, should we interview a child without a parent knowing about it or at least being contacted? The standard practice in the detective bureau, at least in this police department, is we call their parents. Now, what happens at the scene when officers are trying to get cursory or preliminary information? They may question a child at the scene, but if it's a formal interview, we're bringing them into headquarters to interview them. Most of detectives down there, and it's, it's our, our protocol that the parents are notified, say, hey, we have your child here for this reason and we want to interview him. We, we do that. Now, not all police departments do it. It's not a bright line rule, because the law allows us to interview them if we want to. It's particularly in an emergency situation. If we got a suspect out there, we catch one of the kids, there's another kid out there, and particularly with a gang situation, where we know there's gonna be gang retaliation. Your son may be involved, we want to question him now for the interest of public safety. We want to find this other guy that's got a gun, is gonna kill someone.
Pastor, please, please.
Go ahead.
You talked about that earlier though, and I thought that sounded smart, was that, because I don't know the law, just ignore, don't say anything. And my mind as a parent, I think that that sounds like the right thing to do. Well, I, that you don't like that, you said that's the latest thing now, is that they just ignore it. They don't say anything, you said you have to get in their face and yell at them.
No, 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 no.
That scares them, you know?
I never said I'd yell at them.
Well, you said you have to get in their face and just...
Right, and that's because, this is when, we're, to particularly talk about Easton, and it does happen on the streets. There's this thing right now, where there's the kids walking that, like, you may have a kid, like a criminal trespass situation, let's, let's use Easton, but I work at Easton, I always stand in the same spot. And I'll watch the kids come in, and I'll make sure that their pants are up, their hoods are down. I'll look at a kid coming and I'll say, hey buddy, you gotta, you gotta take your hood down. He sees me and just keeps walking. Doesn't take his hood down. So now I gotta go get in his face and say, you need to take your hood down because you're not allowed to have it on in Easton property. There's this thing where kids think, they have this attitude where they'll say, he ain't talking to me. And if we are talking, we have a legal reason to talk to you. There's difference between when it's consensual encounters where a person, a child doesn't have to stop if, but that's where kids need, if they're gonna do that and they're gonna just ignore police officers, they better know the law. Because a police officer has the right to that level zero, that level one, to take action against that, your child. I mean, it's, it's, and it's a thing, you see it on videos, you see kids, it's, it's kids with attitudes that I'm talking about. Not all kids do this. But there are some kids where you really have to get in their face, say, I'm talking to you, eye-to-eye contact. Alright, anybody else, because we wanna, Brother Jesse?
This is the last one, I have one. Uh, kind of piggybacking off of what other Richard asked, what she was asking in terms of our youth. Uh, she mentioned clusters, I call them clusters. Uh, in social settings, whether it be Easton or just out in the park or whatever. What in particular, regardless of the number, what in particular do you as officers look for that would, that, that would say to you, I need to walk up to that and break whatever that may be up? Whether it's a, whether it's three kids, twenty kids, six, regardless of the number, what types of things are you looking for so that our young people know, if I'm gonna be out with some of my friends, I need to make sure none of us look like X to decrease the, the, the chances of, of an unnecessary interaction with the, with police?
There's, there's so many different factors that come into that. Police officers do profile. The, the federal government, TC, when you get on a plane because you gotta take your shoes off, you're being profiled. We profile, that's the way everyone wanna catch criminals. Profiling solely based on somebody's race is unlawful. When it comes to these, these particular groups of people in neighborhood, it depends on the area. It depends on if we've had crime in the area. It depends on if there's players in that group that we know have, are criminals. It depends, it could be a citizen complaint, it could be a situation where they're hanging out after hours in the park. There's been damage to the park, I mean, there's so many different variables. There's not a particular number that in a park, we're gonna go up and tell kids they gotta break it up or, that we're watching. Officers are trained, we're always watching everything, that's what they're trained to do. However, if they're in a group and they're not violating the law, then they shouldn't be pushed off, they shouldn't be pushed anywhere, they shouldn't be told to go anywhere. However, the officer does have the right to walk up to them and engage them in conversation. They don't have to abide, they can walk away. However, the officer has justified reason to take enforcement action or ask them for ID. They're required to give ID, satisfactory proof of who they are. There's no hard and fast numbers. And then you get into, like I told you before, we're trying to get the bad cops. There are some cops that will harass you. It happens, and we have, we have to deal with it. The Division of Police is probably, I've worked for multiple police departments, I can tell you, we have probably some of the strictest policies of any police department I've worked for. We have an internal affairs process, I used to be an internal affairs investigator, I know, sort of Director Stewart used to be. Uh, that's my boss down there, at the end, we have four different books that we have to know, and they're all this thick. We do investigate. If you feel as though that you have a question and you wanna file a complaint against a police officer, please do. Who do they go see? That will be at the Internal Affairs Bureau. That's the number six, four, five, four, six, six zero. But we do, and they, we do, we find that police officers are wrong every day, that they make mistakes. Police officers are, we are held to a high standard, trust me. Human, human. Let me, so we conclude here. Um, anybody else, I wanna make sure everybody's had their question answered.
Most of the prosecutors do civil, civil criminal.
Um, prosecutors by their definition are mostly criminal, but there is a civil division. So say, you know, maybe pay your property taxes, um, they... So, say, you know, maybe pay your property taxes, then that may be something that falls under a prosecutor, you might be prosecuted for that. But mostly when people think of prosecutors, it's criminal. And Pastor, I know you're racking up, but I just want to leave people with a few nuggets. As, you know, my brother Eric Seabrook said, if you're pulled over by the police, they not have a right to search your car unless they see something. So, anytime they say, can I search your car, you can always say no, and there should be no repercussions for that unless they see a gun sticking up. So, honestly, you laugh, but if you know you have a gun or drugs in your car, please say no, because they're going to find them, honestly, right? You know, the laws are written in so many different ways that the police officers really have any reason to stop you. So, you know, when you're driving, you know, that thick white bar, the people kind of roll over, you know, it's the stop sign, it's a thick white bar. You go over that, they can stop you. You make a, you know, wrong turn, they can stop you. So, the traffic laws are written, so they really have a lot of mechanisms to stop you if they wanted to. So, I just encourage you to do what Brother Eric says, which is just to, you know, de-escalate the situation if you can. If you can't, you get charged, call me.
Let me say this, and dealing with that, and I think part of it is not knowing. Because I remember that, that when we bought this building and we had to go to the Forest Park Civic Association over there to get the permits and everything to do the changes. I was running late, I don't believe I did it, but they said I ran a red light, I mean, a stop sign. And I pulled into the association, I didn't see the police officer behind me, he had his lights on. And I said, oh man, so I went to pull into a place, but I said, no, it says no parking, I don't want to say anything about me not parking, parking in a parking zone. So, I back out, he puts on this speaker, pull over or I'll arrest you. And I'm thinking, for what did I do? So, I, I, I stopped, I get out of the car, because I'm going to go to the meeting. He said, get back in the car, I get back in the car. And then he comes up to me, says, you know what you did? I said, no, what did I do? He said, you ran, you ran a stop sign. And he says, let me see your license and ID and everything, so I did that. He puts me in the back of the police car. Next thing I know, two more police cars pull up, this is right over here at the civic station at Forest Park. Two other police cars pull up. Next thing I know, they literally take my car apart. They open the trunk, they take everything out of the trunk, they take everything out of the dashboard, they just, I mean, out of the glove compartment, and just threw it all in the back of the car. And next thing I know, I'm sitting there for about forty-five minutes, because now, the, all the officials are coming out of the, because they think I'm not showing up. And here I'm sitting in the back of a police car. And they come out, next thing I look, and here comes a tow truck. They put my car up on the tow truck. And I'm like, I said, and nobody was, the officer wasn't in the car. He was out talking to another couple that was walking their dog, and he was talking to them, and then the other police officer came, they were all talking up there. And I'm in the back of the police car, can't yell at anybody, can't do anything. And next thing I know, he comes back, he gets in the car, I said, what did I do? He said, well, you have an outstanding parking ticket. And you owe, I think like, I forgot what it was. He says, I'm going to take you downtown. For a parking ticket? So, I, he took me downtown, drove me all the way downtown from up here, and said, okay, and he took me past everybody, right to the front of the line, he said, you gotta pay your parking ticket, I think it's going to be about six hundred dollars. I said, for a parking ticket? It was eighty-five dollars. He gets, and I turn around and say something to him, he's gone. So, now here I am, stuck downtown Columbus, no car, no money, just a debit card, and I'm trying to get back home to get Hannah. And I didn't know he couldn't, he couldn't, you know, go through my car, because I would have said, hey, don't do that. But I'm thinking, I don't want to have any problems here, I don't think I did anything wrong, so I'm just going to shut up and let him do it. I, I, I just literally, my wife would tell, he just literally tore my car apart and took my cellphone, because I was in the car. So, I couldn't even call my wife to say, can you come and get me? So, I'm saying this to say that, a lot of times, even though we try to do everything to de-escalate, I think sometimes, especially as black people, we feel like people take liberties upon our civil liberties. They feel like, well, you know what, because you're probably ignorant of the law, and we'll go as far as you allow us to. Because had I known what Eric was just saying, I probably would have said, excuse me, do you have any reason to, to search my car? Did I do anything, or do you see anything in here that would make you think something's illegal? But then to tow the car, I didn't know my rights. And I think sometimes, as, as black people, we feel like we're being taken advantage of by police officers. And we look at situations like in Ferguson, we look at situations like in, in New York and Cleveland, and we say, you know, how is it that we always, you know, on the bad side, never hardly are acquitted. But we're always, because I heard the, the statistic the other day, there are more African-American men in prison today than were ever in slavery those two hundred years. Now, I'm not saying all those guys are right. But we constantly are repeatedly finding up the time where men have served twenty-five years, wrongfully convicted of a crime. You put that in there, in, in the mix along with what we see on Facebook, what we hear on the news. And you're right, if it bleeds, it leads. Because I remember so often, and I'm not knocking any, any, any particular news department, but on Fox TV, and I'm not knocking them, yeah, I guess I am, I don't do it, I don't care. They were constantly showing the burnings and the rioting that's going on in Ferguson. And we sat at dinner with, what's his name, Bishop, from the Word Church, Parker, Bishop Parker, Eddie Parker and his wife. And he said to us, he said, do you not realize Pastor Williams, that when that rioting was happening in Ferguson, Church of God in Christ had their convention in, also in Ferguson, right outside of Ferguson. And he said, we, as a group of over four hundred individuals, made up in our mind that once the rioting stopped about three or four in the morning, we were going to walk through the community and clean up the glass and the trash and everything. Never made the TV, never made anybody's report. But here was a group of, of, of people who didn't even, most of them didn't even live in Ferguson, did that. But see, we as black folks sometimes don't see it. It's never portrayed on TV as us doing things like that that are progressive and they're right. And so, when, now, when the little bit of self-esteem that we do have, when someone comes along and removes that last bit of self-esteem that we have, by telling us, you know, you can't congregate, you can't wear your hoodies, and, don't get me wrong, I'm a problem with that. But we can't wear this, and we can't do that. We don't hear it happening to white children, primarily black children. So, here's where I want to conclude, knowing that we have to deal with these issues. And even though Rodney King was so many years ago, we still see it very clearly on video, it's brought to our attention. I'm asking each one of you as we conclude, I want, I know this is rapid fire, because we're getting late, I don't want to be too long. But tell us something that we can take home with us, that will enable us to feel like we can empower our children to be able to walk through the Tamarack Circle, to go to Easton, to go wherever we want to go as a group of four and five and six kids, that we can ride together as four black people in a car. And don't feel like just because we're riding past a police car, they're going to pull us over because there's four of us in the car. And our music's not bumping. Or let's say our music's bumping. That's not illegal, it may be awful, but it's not illegal. It might be, but anyway, just, just quickly rapid fire.
Let me say this, Dean Pastor, one of my jobs is in the public safety, I run a community camera program. I have gotten ten or fifteen different requests from people in the Tamarack, Morris Road area to put a neighborhood safety. The reason that they want them up there is because there have been homicides, there have been robberies, there have been drug sales, there have been all kinds of shootings, problems of that nature. So, they put them in certain areas where they felt that these problems are going to happen. Until recently, I haven't been able to do that because I needed fiber connection and all that kind of stuff, because it goes right to the police department. But we're not getting calls to have cameras installed in these locations because kids are acting out and that and that. It goes a little beyond that. A police officer or a group of police officers don't have that big of an issue going up telling kids. And we have, we have officers assigned, community liaison, community resource officer, that are, are, part of their job is to go up to a group of thirty or forty kids or wherever and just engage them in conversation, not to accuse them of anything, not to top stop them or try to stop them from doing anything, because they are community liaison, so, cops. And they've, they've all been in there for ten, fifteen years. They, they like their job, they like the neighborhoods they serve, and they, they know that the best way to deal with that is to know who they're talking to and have them know the officer. So, they approach them, they introduce themselves, they tell them why I'm there, they have National Night Out, they invited out different functions. I personally started when I'm personal, but I, we have a program now called TAPS, Team of Police Service Captain. We go to various schools, we take kids who are, what the Columbus City Schools say are red, red, red kids, have issues with that, with attendance, academics, and overall performance, discipline. And we take these kids, get over an eleven or twelve week course, we sit down and talk to them for two and a half hours once a week about the things, making right decisions, how to stay out of drug life, or gang life, how to affect, how drugs affect them, how to interact with people the right way. And we expect, have great response from this program. But we expect that program to go, all right now, we're in the high school, in the second year, we're at East High School, which is a challenge, that it's working well, it really is. And you see some of these kids, I'm telling you, it's amazing that the attitude that some of these kids have. And so, you've got police officers who have the challenge beyond belief, that are going to step in there and put these kids, hopefully put them in the right frame or like, so they step off to the right course for the right reasons. So, we're doing, I know we're on the South High, we're on the West Highs, and we're actually going to, we have plans to take the Berkeley Rights and Intention Center to the city. So, the city of Columbus has made attempts to not just let things go and deal with things as they can happen to occur. At Ferguson, it can happen out here on the street, you know, it can happen down in rural towns, you know. But we train our people, try and train them, we can major it, we train our people, we respect them, and when they're not, we deal with. What happened to you, I will tell you right now, was all kind of wrong, and you should see her when she leave, or she leaves here, because somebody should be paying you some money, if you don't get arrested for a car, and he took your car, or something like that, they may have known. But towed it, and maybe they were checking it for incidental incidents, so, but you need to talk to her, you're actually wrong, that should not have happened, plain and simple. So, you're right, knowing, you're knowing your rights, like, we didn't talk about Terry versus State of Ohio here, stopping first, but Terry was in Ohio. I know Terry well, I grew up with him. All right, so, I know the stopping first law, I mean, I don't know, I would just know the college, learn the different attorneys or instructors telling me about stopping first. Well, I could teach the courts, you know, as a little kid growing up in Cleveland, I, I knew how that happened. Louis Stokes, Carl Stokes represented the movement, it's an amazing deal. But that's why I said, you have to know the law, you have to know what you can and can't, people can and can't have you do. But how, what my word to you is, not to worry about kids that just haven't had, haven't had a point, the kids that are out there, they're putting themselves in harm's way because they're making the wrong types of decisions. Sorry.
No, that's what we want, that's what we want. Anybody else?
Can I say one thing? You know, we, we talk about de-escalating situations, staying alive, you know, being respectful. My fiance, I've seen him go through a lot of things, you know, he's a black man, you know, I've seen him get laid down by guns because he fit a description, a profile. So, I've seen a lot of that. I have a new daughter, you know, I don't want her to go through what we got to go through. When is it going to be okay for black men, black women, to be able to hang out without being questioned? You know, you talk about people come up to a group of thirty people, black women, black men, they are profiled, whether you want to admit it or not, they are, okay? Why, why, why can they not fear for themselves that they're going to be accused of something, just as the police officers are fearful for themselves? When they go up to a situation, you know, they see a black man, they go, he, you know, black men typically get violent, he's going to get violent, they automatically are tense. You know what I mean? When, when is it going to be okay for us, not even us, just people in general, to be fearful of the police, the bad guys, you know what I mean?
Let me say this, it's not, okay, let me, let me say that, I know that's not what people want to hear, it's not. We live in a fallen world. People mistreat, I've done human rights work in dealing with people in Rwanda, dealing with people in Eastern Europe. Human beings find a way to mistreat human beings. Whether you're talking about Yugoslavia or Rwanda, whether you, people will find, if it's not based upon race, it might be based upon the shape of your knowledge. That literally was how people distinguished between Hutus in Rwanda. In Yugoslavia, it was a country of ethnic groups, okay? Japanese women, Chinese, and Japan occupied Korea, they took the women as sex slaves, like Bo- Obama is doing now in Nigeria, okay? If you operate from that premise, and particularly because we're in a church, if you're a Christian, you can understand it, we live in a fallen world. So, I won't even tell you it's going to be right, but what I can tell you is that it can be bad too. And there still will be bad things that happen. So, what you really have to do to be psychologically and emotionally prepared is anticipate the worst and operate to bring out a good result. But if you expect to be, if you expect folk to be fair all the time, they're not. And that's just a hard, bitter truth of life, which I found from my experience to be true around the world.
Right, and I mean, I understand, I mean, I guess I didn't word it right. What I mean is, why do cops, you know, and I'm not saying all cops, you know, they're bad, like you said, bad cops and good cops. Why do some cops get away with a lot more of the disrespect than, you know, civilians?
Because we give them, we give them, I mentioned something earlier, and I'll try to be short, the difference between law enforcement officers and peace officers.
Right.
Okay. We give them a certain amount of leeway because if something's wrong, I want them to show up and deal with it. And because of the responsibility that we place on them, we balance it out. And I'm going to be critical, I mean, I am a huge critic as a policy matter and as a political matter of law enforcement, because I think there is bias and systemic racism, I think it's, it's in the system. But I also understand the balance. And we give people the benefit of the doubt because they're also the people who have to chase the bad guy. If somebody breaks in my house, or if I think somebody is doing a home invasion, and believe me, I, I have a client who was like seventeen years old, and part of what he did on his regular weekly after-school activity was invade people's homes. And it just, it amazes me how somebody could be so old and so young to say, I'm going to break, just randomly break into your house and take what you have. And a young man got shot just recently, within the last three days, as part of a home invasion. You know, the woman that, when he broke in, she had her gun and she shot. That is, we have to realize that because that's out there, and because of the responsibility we give them, we also give them a lot of leeways in making mistakes. And they become, I understand this, but, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Human beings become exposed to what we see. As a lawyer, I have been, I assume that clients are not telling you the full truth or they're lying. And that's because, and people do it for all different reasons, sometimes they're embarrassed, but I assume that clients are lying. If you're a police officer and all you're dealing with for the most part, if seventy percent of the people you deal with are lawbreakers, you're human, you get violent. It's, it's, it's just a human phenomenon. So, I factor that in. If they're dealing with a criminal element, they become violent. I think all of us do that. We adapt to this environment that we're in. If we're dealing with people that aren't truthful, then we begin to doubt everybody.
If we're dealing with people that aren't truthful, then we begin to doubt everybody.